Or tonight, we're mindful of those around our world who are hurting. Lord, no matter where, from Shanghai to the inner cities of our own nation, Lord, we really, really pull on your grace and mercy for them tonight. Thank you for being with us. Thank you for your protection. Thank you for your power, oh God, and thank you for peace. We love you in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On our Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to Texas, one state for God and God, one indivisible.
May be seated. We have no declarations or presentations today. Next item, any citizen wishing to speak to the council and address the council on non-agenda items can do so by coming forward and stating their name. You have three minutes in which you can speak about anything you wish. Address the council by mayor and council or council, and you can do so by coming forward to the podium and state your name for the record.
My name is Cliff D'Arman, 3005 North Century. Live here in Odessa. Proud pastor of Hope Alive Church, and I just wanted to extend an invitation to not only our council and leadership, but as well as representatives of the city. May the 5th is the National Day of Prayer. I'm proud to serve as one of the assistants to help organize an event prayer that night, 7:00 PM at the Fundom Hotel. It's gonna be just a time of unity, a time of prayer, and as a faith leader, it means a lot to me to see all representatives of the city that can be in attendance or at least gather in prayer, maybe and be mindful of that night. It means a lot to me that the National Day of Prayer is recognized. I believe in prayer, and I pray for you all, but this is a time for us to come together and pray for our city. And so you have my invitation for sure, all people, everyone, welcome to attend and find a place to unify together. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor, if I could, I just wanted to introduce Anthony Bolton. He is working on his, tell me what you're working on, Doctorate of what?
Oh, Public Policy with a concentration in Social Policy.
And that's why he's been coming to our meetings, and I better take this off to say this, and I told him how nice you all were, and so if he needs an interview, that you would gladly give him one. So, just wanted to, he may have some questions that he needs to ask occasionally of some of us, and so just wanted to know who he was and what he was working on, because he'll probably have to leave before we're done.
All right, so you're buying seven lunches. Are we gonna go out and forward? The consent agenda of the council will review that. While you're doing so, also remind everyone, any member of the public may address the city council regarding any of its agenda items before or during the consideration of said item. Look over the consent agenda item as presented.
Mayor, I have a correction on the minutes. I don't, I don't think it's gonna take 13 months to do our salary survey. It was called to say 13 months. I think she said three months.
Oh, no.
Yeah, it's got 13 in the minutes. So I just wanna make sure we're not gonna take that long, Cindy.
Okay, do I have a motion with the correct, with a correction of 13 months to six months? Do I have a motion?
So moved.
So I have a motion by Councilmember Willis, second by Councilmember Swann, all in favor indicated by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed indicated by saying nay. Motion passed unanimously. You got the corrections?
Yes, Mayor, for the record, was that for just the minutes or was that for the entire consent agenda?
That was for the minutes.
Yeah, that was the only thing I know. Just wanted the mayor to know.
Yeah, you, you, you're watching the, devil's in the details. We're gonna move to other council action, resolution, item one, consider budget amendment for mid-year review of employee compensation. City Manager Morello?
May I, Norman, do you need a motion for the consent?
Yes, for the consent.
Oh, you have a motion for consent, so that was a motion for the, for the minutes and the correction. Now, do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilmember White, second by Councilmember Swann, all in favor indicated by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed indicated by saying, by saying nay. Motion passed unanimously. Now, we're moving on to other council action, resolution, consider budget amendment for mid-year review of employee compensation. City Manager Morello?
Yes, Mayor, Council, good evening. I believe Cindy and I are gonna work on this side together, but during the last year's budget workshop, we discussed the possibility of a review of salaries at the meter point. Furthermore, I think all of us have seen the cost of goods and services go up. Also, for departments such as fire and PD, salary adjustments are used as retention and retention tools. At last week's work session, we discussed the possibility of salary adjustments for city employees, and we also reviewed a few scenarios with you. Also at that meeting, Mr. Thompson specifically wanted us to look at the possibility of a one-time increase as well as a percentage increase to all employees. I think Cindy has provided you a spreadsheet with the numbers associated with the various scenarios. Additionally, we talked about conducting a compensation analysis in order to assist you, the council, in making appropriate adjustments when the compensation analysis is done, so that we as an organization can be competitive with other cities and the local market. As you look at those numbers, council, you may wanna consider, or rather keep in mind, that if you do a percentage increase in any category, we would wanna hold off on any additional percentage increase come October, as we traditionally do. Conversely, if you, if you do a percentage increase, you may wanna, just a one-time rather increase now, you may want to consider a percentage increase come October. But you have the numbers, and certainly Cindy and I can walk you through any of the various scenarios that we presented you.
Counsel, you wanna start there on, over there with Ms. Swann?
So, in looking at this, I think it's gonna be more of an impact if we give a one-time of the 1750, and then when we do budgets in October, we need to look at the percentage for, to increase the raises then, because I hate to give a 4% raise and then only a 2% raise in October, when we could possibly give a 6% raise. So that's, that's my thoughts, but I just wanna be able to give them something they did, they need. I think the 1750 would be impactful, where if you get $20 a paycheck, I'm not sure that that's as impactful.
That'd be 3B.
3B.
Okay. Anything else? Mr. Matha?
And just to clarify, 3B also includes police officers and...
It would be all employees.
All employees, all across the board.
Yes, sir.
That's kinda where I'm leaning towards also. Just because I just think, if they're struggling right now, that one, that one lump sum is gonna really help them get caught up on, on maybe some bills or some groceries, whatever they're gonna need. I think it just, I think it does make a bigger impact that way than one, one, one time lump sum. And then surely address it again in October. So, that's, that's how I'm leaning.
Mr. Swann? I mean, it's false, I'm sorry, Mr. Thompson. Sorry about that. Apologies.
Well, I guess I'm in a little different camp. At last budget session in last year, I think that I was for a 5% raise then, because our employees are so far behind. We missed 2021, or 2020.
2020.
So they did not get their normal 3% raise. That hadn't been made up yet. The 4%, they just, I mean, inflation numbers came out today, they're 8.5%, folks. I mean, eggs are up 11%, I mean, just eggs, and fish and meat, and our people, and of course gasoline, goes without saying, that's one of our economy, but that really impacts our people big, big time. I, I think they need a full 4% now, and a, and a one-time, and I'm, I'm happy with 1750, I'm happy with 1250. I suggested 1250 as kind of a compromise, but it's only, you know, 1750 is, is 1,982,000 dollars, and the 3%, the 3% is 3 million from now till the first of the, till the budget, October 1st. And then we have the study coming that we're talking about doing. We should have it before the first of the year. We don't have to make the adjustment October 1, we can make it December, January 1. There's no magic to it. Our sales tax is up, our sales tax is up $5 million, just got another 3 million, and we're above budget again, and I think we ought to share that with our employees and catch them up. The oil patches fired up, and they're paying good, and we don't, we've got a lot of vacancies, because we need to be able to hire people and keep people. And I, I think the fire and police are all stretched real thin. I think everybody's stretched thin. So I'm pretty much in a camp of a one-time to really help them get caught on bills, and then 4% until we get the study done, and then perhaps revisit it in December if we get the study back, and then implement whatever we need to implement going forward. But we're fortunate enough, the sales tax, and I don't think the sales tax is going down. I know it's been budgeted very conservatively, when rightfully so, but I think we all knew this was coming, and this inflation's just gonna keep our sales tax numbers up, not down. So I think we'll share that with our employees. So that's my position.
So you're for, you're for 4B or 4A?
I'm, I'm for 4% across the board in any of those one-time deals.
Okay, so 4A, 4% full-time employees and one-time 1250.
And I can go with the 1750, or I can go with 1,500, 1250s.
And I'm okay with 4A too, because I wasn't taking into account that they did not get an increase in 2021.
Those are good, those are good points that you brought up.
I mean, because they're that far behind.
They are behind already.
So I, I'm, I'm okay with, with 4A as well, because they didn't get anything in 2021.
Denise, you're 4A, 4A, Mr. Thompson? Mr. Matha?
Also, yeah, that was a good point. That slipped my mind whenever he was talking about that, so.
You're messing me up here. Councilmember White?
This has been more difficult than what you would think it, it should be. I initially really wanted to look more at 1B, that would be the 5% for police and fire, 3% for all others, and then the one-time of 1,200. But I don't like the potential that they would not get a percentage increase in October. You know, that's, that's the one thing that concerns me.
Yes.
And, and, you know, it doesn't mean that it would not happen. A lot depends on what our financials are for the next six months or a few months, you know, because we'll, when will we have our final budget meeting in August?
Uh, late July.
Late July. And so it's not a whole lot of time to, to make that up, and I do believe that our police and fire, police officers, firefighters, and inspectors are way underpaid, but I also believe that all city employees deserve an increase. So that was completely clear as mud.
Yeah.
But right now...
Sounded great.
Thank you. I'm probably leaning a little bit more towards 1B, but I'm, I'm not opposed to discussing any of them.
Okay, so I'm not gonna, I'm gonna, I'm not gonna put you down for nothing right now.
You can put me down for 1B, but I'm open for negotiation.
1B, okay. Mr. Swann?
Cindy, do you have a feeling, Michael, do you have a feeling of what, where are you gonna put this in the budget? Because if we do 4A, we're adding $3 million to next year's budget, right?
Correct. Yes, sir.
Everybody who works for the city needs a raise. I agree, I agree. We also need to be careful with our taxpayers' money. So if, if, if you think you can get this in the budget without a lot of hate and discontent, then, then I'm gonna have to go with 4A.
Why don't, Cindy, can you step up and talk about the mechanics of what that looks like in next year's budget? I want the council clearly understand where we're gonna find those dollars and the fact that those dollars now carry over.
So, one of the reasons why we're looking at this is because our sales tax dollars are up. So as long as we continue to see that increase, then I would say, yes, we can cover that type of thing. I don't have a crystal ball, I don't know if y'all do, but obviously, the trend we're seeing right now is an increase, and we did budget very conservatively for the year, so that, there is that. The other thing is, as long as we don't see any drastic change, downward change in our property values, then we shouldn't be losing anything in the area of property tax revenue. So, so we should be fine there as well.
I'm pretty sure our property taxes are not gonna, assessments are gonna go down.
Well, a, a, as you noticed, last year, or for this '21, we had a, we had an increase in residential, but we had a decrease on the commercial side, mostly in our business, personal property. And I think that's probably turning around with the oil field opening back up. We're hopeful that that does, so I think you have, but, you know, we do, we are limited to how much we can increase our tax rate. Last year, we didn't increase it any at all. So, so there is a little bit of room in there for a small increase to the no new revenue rate, which is where most entities land when they're looking at the tax rate, so.
The biggest variable is gonna be what happens to sales tax. If it continues to go up, we're gonna be fine, but if we have a dramatic decrease like we had in '20, then that could be problematic for us.
But your calculations on this, like on the percentage increases, are for all, all, all positions, all budgeted positions?
All budgeted positions, that includes vacancies.
Yeah, and so any, I'm gonna shift over to Michael. Any idea about how many vacancies we have throughout the city?
199?
Okay, bingo.
So it's quite a few, and, and that does add up. So that is budgeted for, and it is included in the numbers, the vacancies.
I mean, and I hope that we start filling those, you know? I don't want them to stay.
And that would, and, I mean, this does not include overtime, so let me make that clear, this does not include overtime.
That's where the percentage is.
So sometimes that helps offset, when you hit the vacancies numbers, helps offset the overtime costs that we incur. Hopefully, as you can fill vacancies, which is part of the issue with departments, is thinking that higher pay gets us more positions filled, and I know that that's probably crucial to fire and PD. It is to other departments as well, but that would hopefully offset, you get more positions filled, then your overtime should come back down.
But the chance of it fall 190 of them at one time is unrealistic.
Well, we hadn't seen that in a while.
Yeah, I understand that, so it gives us the room we need.
So there is, there is room in there, absolutely, yes.
And it's, it has to happen right now, and it's not gonna happen, so.
True.
We know that, anyway.
Any other questions for Cindy? Eric?
I would probably have to go with 4A. When we did the budget last year, I also thought at that time, I asked for more then, and of course, we didn't, not any of us had a crystal ball, and we don't now, but I felt that they needed it, and that it was, you know, deserved, based on where our economy is and what's going on. And when Cindy's, I trust Cindy, and when she said it's gonna be okay, I believe it's gonna be okay, and I, and I definitely know that they deserve it. I wish we could give, you know, gosh, this is probably just still gonna just make them be okay. It's not gonna make them where they're, you know, having, weigh a whole lot more in their, for their families, which I wish that could happen. But I think I would have to go with 4A, where everybody gets a percentage increase and that one time hits, hits where they can at least see it and feel it.
No, 1A is 5% for police and fire. Oh, 4A?
Yeah.
4, 4A for everyone that's in, in, in the chambers is 4% to all full-time employees, includes vacancies, and B, so, and also one-time stipend of 1,250 to all full-time employees, no vacancies. So, does anybody have any questions?
I have a comment, and it's, and it's more maybe for Michael. So when we renegotiate our inter-locals, oh, sorry, it's not on, when we renegotiate our inter-locals, like with the county, because they don't pay as much for the fires, you know, what they use, is that not a possibility that we can increase OPD and the firefighters at that time, or am I opening up an account of arms?
I don't know if that's a question that falls under the item, Natasha?
I think we can discuss that when we discuss inter-local agreements more so, but we can definitely take that into consideration.
And Mayor, or Michael, we'll still be doing the salary study, right?
Yes, and I think that's critical to remind everyone that if you, when we have that salary survey, we can make the appropriate adjustments based on positions.
Right.
So for example, someone in PD will look at parity with other cities and the market. That will go for a worker in solid ways, a worker in code enforcement, so all of those would be looked at on an individual position level.
Now, this does not include council appointees?
No, no.
So, let me ask this question. So, when are we gonna commission the study, and what are we looking at a cost? Are we gonna send them out to bid?
Mayor, we are, we have, we are developing the RFP, outlining the things that we wanna see in the, in the compensation analysis.
And we're gonna do a presentation to council on the work session?
Yes, sir, it will come, you'll see it on the work session. We're gonna put an RFP out and take proposals from people who do that sort of work, but it'll not only look at salary comparisons and analysis, but it'll also give us, hopefully, a format to use year by year, so we can make the appropriate adjustments on an annual basis. That way, we're not having to make these significant adjustments, you know, mid-year.
We have any idea what, on average, we've seen in the past that those cost?
Yes, sir, in talking to my human resources director, he has seen those things range from any, anywhere from 100, from 70,000 up to 125,000.
Okay, so, another question. How many positions in the, in the city do we have currently? Positions, that base of designated?
FTE positions?
1,031.
1,031.
And so 199 of this 1,031 are vacant, correct? And we budgeted this, this year, those 199. So actually, how many W2s do we actually have in the city right now? It, it, it doesn't have to exact, just close ballpark.
Well, I mean, some of those include part-time, so I would say 2,000, 3,000, 1,000, so 830.
Okay. So let's just say 30 average, 830 average. Okay. Here, here's my last question. So, help me understand this, so what we're, we're doing right here, you know, it looks like the, the consensus here is for 4A, and for the 4%, and so we're looking at an impact, a budget impact for 2022 of $3 million, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And so what we're gonna do is, we're gonna get that analysis by the end of our budget year or our calendar year?
Probably closer to the calendar year.
Calendar year, okay. So you recommended in the beginning when you opened up about not doing anything once we hit October 1 and hold off until the...
If you do a percentage increase, we may wanna hold off on any additional percentage increase come October, until we get the salary analysis, that way you can make the appropriate adjustments.
And justification to what the analysis indicates of what we have to do, especially within the specialty areas?
Areas, yes, sir.
Okay. Counsel, any further discussion?
The only thing I'd like to mention is the council appointees. I think they, you know, they're like everybody else, that they're higher paid, but they still, inflation still bites everybody, so, you know, I, I was thinking about 2% or 3% for the, for the appointees and, and for the rest of this year, and then, you know, till we get the salary survey thing back and see where that, because that would be included, would it not, Cindy? Would that be included?
No, not in this, no.
In the study?
No, could, could we, could we?
Why couldn't we?
But couldn't we, couldn't we hold that off until we do, when do we wind up doing evaluations again?
That'll be before, typically before the end of the, of the fiscal year, so, September.
So let's go, let's go.
We could do that one, we could do that one.
We could, yeah, we'll do that when we do that. So like, like right now, what we wanna do, and I think everybody is kinda indicated here on the dials, is that we wanna do the personnel that's out there, and then we will, we will review our appointees when we wind up doing the evaluations. It has always been the, the process that the council has taken in the past. I, I'm just afraid that we're gonna wind up creating a, a precedent here that, and so, it's just one, one, one at a time, and let, let the community process out of what we wind up doing.
We could still include it in the RFP and in the study.
Yeah, oh, yeah, the study, yes.
We'd like to see that. Include the appointees in the RFP when you write the RFP?
Yes, sir.
And you can still include that?
Yeah.
But we don't have to act on it right then either.
Correct.
It just gives us a roadmap.
Correct. Any further discussion? Mrs. White? Have you been convinced enough?
Oh, I, I am, I'd, I'd give far more than this. I'm, I'm hoping that we will do something for our appointees before the end of the fiscal year.
Any further discussion? Any other comments? Any direction? Okay, so does anybody want to give a pinpoint motion of what they are, they are motioning and for council's consideration?
I'd make a motion that we accept example 4A with a 4%, increase in all full-time employees with a one-time stipend of $1,150 to all full-time employees, no vacancies.
Okay, we have a motion for, by Councilmember Thompson for 4A. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Matha, all in favor indicated by saying aye.
Aye.
All, all those opposed indicate by saying nay. Motion passes unanimously. Okay. We're gonna go to other coun, we're gonna go to other council action. We'll note that Councilmember Swann is, is leaving. She has a very important engagement. Her son's gonna be playing Jesus in the, in the school play, so that is a lot more priority.
I agree.
We're gonna go to item two, discuss and approve amendments of Article 4, Article 4 through 17, video gaming, gaming. Okay, so, last council meet, well, work session, we basically discussed the game rooms, video gaming, and so in doing so, we looked at several amendments. And is this the latest one that we have right here from the, from last week? This is it? It hasn't changed much? Or do we have any? Or do we have them here? This is the other one that you gave us, right?
We sent out a copy today with just the amendment change you made, Mayor, but it has not changed much.
Okay, okay. So...
Yesterday, I believe we sent out all of the amendments we discussed at the last work session.
Yes. Okay, do, as counsel, okay, so let's, just give me a moment, I'm just trying to read to some of the things that we have, so. Okay, so what we looked at is Section 417-1 definitions, game room being a, a building facility or other place where one or more amusement redemption machines are present. I want to be able to change that from amusement, and to be changed to either eight-liners or video gaming machines, for the reason is there is definitive difference between amusement machine and that of a gambling machine, eight-liner, or video machine. The other item that we wind up going to 417-2, application license. Application shall include site plan. Site plans are already included, but we're talking only exterior, we're not mentioning, we're not adding interior site plan? Because I know that we want, when we spoke about it, not in October, but prior to that, we wanted an interior site plan as well.
Correct. So I believe that there is going to be a, they already require an interior floor plan?
Is right.
They already required interior floor plan, and this is just the addition of the exterior site plan.
Occupation tax, annual occupation tax of $15 is hereby living on every video gaming covered by this article. All video gaming devices are subject to occupation tax when placed into operation facility. Where did that 15, so is that current, that $15? Device operation is 1,000? That is correct, that is unchanged?
The, well, the $15 is the...
I'm sorry, 100, yeah, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Are you talking about the $15?
Yeah, we, yeah.
Okay.
We got licensing fees of 2,500, and that is a permit fee, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so licensing fee is a 2,500, device operation fees is 300 per device, each... Each, uh, annual criminal background check of each employee shall be a hundred. Uh, occupation tax, annual occupation tax of fifteen dollars hereby living on every video gaming device covered by this article. Uh, can you explain a little bit what that fifteen dollars is?
Uh, yes. I do not have the actual statute on me, but it comes from chapter twenty-one fifty-three of the occupations code. Um, so there's a state tax that's cost sixty dollars, and that particular statute um, in, in chapter twenty-one fifty-three allows for municipalities to charge one, up to one quarter of the state tax, which is sixty dollars.
On the occupation tax.
That's where that comes from.
And that's covered on the occupational code?
Yes.
Okay, I want everybody to note that. Okay, so we're going to move on to devices permanently removed for services, restrictions, regulation, controls, limitations for licensed establishment. This is basically disabling or seizure of devices or licensed. The C shall have the authority to disable, seal, or seize any device or license at any location when a violation of the ordinances occur, occurs in accordance with the procedure provided herein. It shall be unlawful for any person to enable a lawful disabled device to break a seal of device affixed by the city or continue to operate once the operator license ceased. These restrictions, regulation, controls, limitations for licensed establishment. We're adding that.
Where, where are you?
Page seven.
Page seven.
Page seven. No, Mayor, we are not adding the disabling. That is already there.
That's already there?
Yes. The only thing that's changing on page seven is it said restrictions, or no, it said requirements for licensed establishments was the header on E, and so now it will read restrictions, regulations, controls, and limitations for licensed.
So we're taking out the requirements?
Correct.
The word requirement?
Correct.
Okay, can, can you explain to me why?
I did not make that proposed amendment, but I would assume that it's for clarity purposes.
Clarity of what?
What the next section covers, so that it's not just a requirement that, to let the reader, the citizens, know that this includes restrictions, any regulations, controls, and limitations.
Okay. Okay, so now we're going into page eight. And we're going into, um, section, yes, ma'am. Section A, location of any video game establishment is hereby prohibited in the place of business within fifteen hundred feet. We, we're scratching the three hundred, one thousand, nine, and fifteen hundred feet from another video gaming establishment, any church, school, or other educational institution, hospital or healthcare facility, public building, or the boundary line of a residential zoning district. Counsel, are we agreement on that? The location of any video game establishment is hereby prohibited within fifteen hundred feet of another video gaming establishment. Are we in, uh, in accordance to that? Item D, game room...
That's redundant.
We took that out. That's...
So you, you took item B out?
Yes, because it's redundant. It's in A.
See, item C stays in. Item D, is that, we're adding that?
Item D now becomes item C because we took out item B. So, yes.
And we're adding the May one, twenty twenty-two?
Yes.
Okay, so item D becomes C. The measurement of distance between a place of business where the video gaming devices are located in the church or public hospital will be along the property lines of the street fronts, from the front door to the front door in direct line across intersections.
That was already there. So the only thing that changed is the lettering system on that portion.
Okay, so then we have the Texas alcoholic beverage code. Okay, now, item nine, we spoke about adding that. Game room shall only be considered in existing light industrial LI or heavy industrial HI districts.
Correct.
Counsel, is everybody in agreement with that? Page, yeah.
This is top page nine on my copy.
The number is nine.
It's page nine at the top.
Then we're, then we're going up to page nine. Uh, item ten, hours of operation. Game room shall be limited to the following hours. Monday through Thursday, open eight AM, close at eleven PM. And B, Friday through Sunday, eight AM and close at twelve AM. Thirty paid parking spaces plus one space of every one hundred square feet. Floor area over two thousand square feet shall be required, which we already have in place.
Yes, so I did take that out because it already is in place. If council wishes, you can put it back in this section just to make it clear that it applies to these types of establishments, but it already is in the zoning, so...
Where, where is that one again, about the hours? Where is she?
It's going to be number eleven.
I thought we had agreed that we were going to keep the Sunday hours the same as Monday through Thursday since that's leading into the weekday.
So then the, what you're saying is Friday and Saturday would be eight AM to twelve AM, and then Sunday, Sunday through Thursday would AM to eleven. I think you're absolutely right. So we'll change item A from Monday through Sunday.
Sunday to Thursday.
And then item B would go Friday through Saturday.
So item A would be Sunday through Thursday, eight AM to eleven PM.
Yeah.
And then B would be Friday through Saturday.
Yeah.
Eight to twelve AM.
Any, any discussion on that? I guess we got a call in.
It's a gamer.
Okay, counsel, any questions, any discussion on the amendments for the game room video game?
The only thing I'd like to point out is, if, if you don't mind, is, you know, we, we now have, we now have a ruling from the, from the second, second appellate court?
Yes.
Uh, you know, the state Supreme Court sent back to the second appellate court that they didn't address the question that the city of Fort Worth asked. And so we have that, we now have that ruling, and it's quite interesting. And so as I understand it, uh, the operators are, will probably try to ask the second court of appeals to re, rehear. Is that the right word?
Yes.
Yes, they filed a motion to see if, if they can have a re, a rehearing.
Yeah, okay, which may or may not be granted. That's May the second?
It'll be granted.
May second.
Yeah, it may, you're right. It may or may not.
It may or may not be granted, so we don't know where that's going to stand. It's out of our jurisdiction, so...
They were, they were actually granted an extension to file a dead, that's an extension to a deadline to file for a motion for rehearing.
On May second.
Right, so May second is the deadline to file the motion for rehearing.
Right, so if they don't, then it just, this stands?
For now.
The ruling stands. If they don't grant the motion for rehearing, then what they ruled stands.
Yes.
Which basically the conclusion is, which is very interesting, that the eight-liners are unconstitutional according to the Texas constitution. I find that very interesting. So that creates some more challenges for us if that holds. I know it's not in our jurisdiction, but still, it's precedent in state.
Correct.
Did I say that right?
Yes, it's the only law that we have regarding eight-liners for game rooms, yes.
So that's just another thing you're going to have to consider, I think, at some point, based on what happens in Fort Worth.
Oh, I think we can consider it tonight. Uh, can you tell me, you, you, you responded saying about jurisdiction? What, what did you mean?
This case is out of the second appellate district, district court of Fort Worth. Our district is the court of Eastland, the appellate court of Eastland.
Yes.
They have not taken it up, so we don't have any absolute authority from our jurisdiction on this. But as it stands now, this is the only law that applies to game rooms at this point regarding eight-liners.
It's an opinion?
It's the only opinion, yes.
So, okay. Um, counsel, any other discussion?
So in the opinion, they are unconstitutional?
Unconstitutional, yes. The opinion stopped short of ruling them illegal, but they are saying that the eight-liners are unconstitutional.
I disagree with you one wholeheartedly on that.
No, they, they said they didn't have to address it because they were, their task was to identify whether they were unconstitutional or illegal, or the conjunction. So when they found that they were unconstitutional, they didn't, um, they didn't find that they were illegal. The holding is that they are unconstitutional.
No, they didn't.
That's the question the Supreme Court asked the appellate court to redefine.
They, they pushed it back to the appellate court, but there was three opinions from the state appellate court, and they definitely said they're illegal. They're lotteries. The state, state constitution basically rules here. And the state constitution is very narrow and definitive. For the reason is that, one, they allow lottery by scratch-off, by ping, the ping-pong, bingo, and they also, the other one is raffling. So they're very, very, and the penal code even reaffirms the state constitution. What the appellate court ruled on was the fuzzy animal exception. So basically, and this is why I constructually went back into the amusement portion of our ordinance. For the reason is that when the opinion in, in, in the lawsuit with Riley, what, what happened here was you were able to operate as an amusement machine that basically was covered under the occupational code. That's why I said note the occupational code. And so under that, they were able to operate, basically getting around, so to speak, around the, the constitution. So the thing is, is that a municipality and county, regardless of whether this is in the second district, which surrounds the metroplex, we arbitrarily can apply the Texas constitution. And that's what, you know, that's what a municipality can do. I have spent quite some time now calling everyone I could find in the state and reiterated this fact over and over and over again, and this is my blunt question. Can a municipality like the city of Odessa create, under this opinion, while this thing is being heard, a, an ordinance reaffirming the Texas constitution that defines what gambling is? These machines from the second appellate court deem them unconstitutional and illegal. In the nineteenth century, one of the justices wrote, "We know the difference between an amusement machine that you see at Mr. Gaddy's or Synergy and what we see inside and what is operating within these game rooms." I don't think there is a, anyone here doubting that they know what the difference is. And so I'm under the impression, and not only that, opinion from what the, I have spent more unsleeping hours reading more briefs and opinions and talking to US attorneys, DAs, and the one authority that is, that's also, I spoke with two hours, is the DA out of Jefferson County who has been dealing with these game, uh, issues even offshore. This is, in the end, is what he said. When I asked that question, could we send a letter of stop and desist and confiscate those machines? He said, "Mayor, the only thing that will stop you if your law enforcement would not do it." And that's every county and every municipality. I have yet to find one DA or attorney, or US attorney, that I have given this to that has told me anything different. Now, this is not my opinion. I have crossed every T and dotted every I. And so I think that this is something we need to consider going forward because this changes the whole room. Now, what's going to happen is that they have all the way to May second to put in a, a, basically an appeal. Second court's going to hear it. They're going to throw it right out. It's going to go back to the Texas Supreme Court. It's going to go on their list, and they're going to view it this summer. They've got two options, pick it up or not, or not. Uh, if they don't pick it up, it stands. If they do pick it up, I don't see the, how they're going to change that, and it'll become law. And so this is something else I also discussed, you know, with another attorney out of, out of Dallas. We went through it every step, every opinion, we even, you know, even right in here, in the Texas Supreme Court. This is what started the whole thing. And so, um, and this was back, argued back in January twenty-eighth of twenty twenty. So the thing is, is that, you know, what we're seeing right now is that we have an ability as a council to, one, regulate the premises. And I really feel that we should continue to regulate the premises. But on the second hand, is direct the owners and operators of these illegal, unconstitutional gaming machines to desist, to stop, and to remove those machines within thirty days. If not, well, direct the, the Odessa Police Department to remove them upon those thirty days. Counsel, any discussion?
I guess, as, as listening to you, and I'm not real, real clear where we're going here, but if we regulate, we're asking the police to enforce that?
The constitution and the penal code, uh, chapter forty-seven.
And I guess at what point do we ask them to enforce that and at what level? Because I don't know, we, we talked about vacancies in positions, and I don't, and I believe we have quite a few vacancies in positions. So I, I don't know if I'm hearing that, but, so we would take them from maybe a higher level crime to come and take out these machines? Is that what we're saying?
The machines in itself have now, what can no longer hide on the occupational code, which regulates amusement machines, such as you see in, in synergy and things of that nature. So them being illegal and unconstitutional, they're operating illegally. If we continue to tax and permit these machines, we do so a, an, a machine that by our Texas constitution deems illegal and unconstitutional. We cannot do that as a city. And so what I'm basically saying here is we can regulate the premises. They can continue to operate, but they will be doing so without the illegal gaming machines. The gaming machines give the operators thirty days to remove, and they will remove those from the, in the incorporated city of Odessa. Upon that thirty days, we'll instruct our police department, go one by one and confiscate those machines. And then we will either destroy them, but we're not, we're not going to set it back to them.
And are we sending them into the county to do the same thing?
No, the thing, interlocal will allow PD to do it out there or the sheriff to do it here. That is up to the sheriff. What I'm basically looking at is what we're doing in, inside the city of Odessa. And we have, what, twenty-six, twenty-seven? So in my opinion, after extensively spending every, you know, as much time as I could on this, is I thirty vetted that question. Do we have the authority? And I have spoken, now, let me, I, I, let me just say this for the record. Not every one that I spoke says they're going to go that far, but that's their choice. Doesn't say that they cannot. And now, they are bringing cases to the DA. Uh, and so in, in, in other places, it's, yes, we're definitely looking at that, and we're going to, we're, we're, we're going to start, start that process and start coming up with ordinances, a law within the city of, uh, within their city municipality or county to basically be able to do just that. I'm thirsty, I'm crazy.
Get some water. Basically, you're saying that by this, by us taxing the machines that are, that have been deemed unconstitutional by the Texas state constitution, we're basically giving them credibility. We're, yeah, we're condoning them.
Well, I mean, the thing is, is that we are taxing a, a machine that is un, that has been deemed unconstitutional, lawful.
So we're saying it's okay in another, in one way or another.
So we're engaging, you know, you know, could you make the, I mean, if you're basically saying that, and, and if you've heard it many times, is there money laundering going in within these, these, these machines? So in essence, let's say for the record, that is true, you know, it's alleged. Allegedly say it's true. Then would the city be involved by permitting, pressing? I don't know, but there's a question that I posed. There's others within the state that have made that, the definition saying yes. And so, but, you know, the thing...
Natasha, are you, is that correct? Are you comfortable legally with that being?
Well, if you're going to go with this opinion by the second appellate district of Texas at Fort Worth, if you're going to go with this opinion which says that the eight-liner machines are illegal, then when you, then the question is, and it's on page, um, I'll just read to you even what the opinion states.
Now, Monique said illegal or unconstitutional?
Unconstitutional.
Right.
Unconstitutional. The opinion on page twenty-four in the footnote says left, left open is what happens now with those ordinances. As the Supreme Court noted... As the Supreme Court noted, of course, a finding that the machines are unconstitutional or illegal would also lead to the question whether the city could license, regulate, and tax them through the city's ordinance. So, that's a question that's still left open, and they're noting that even in this opinion.
For the reasons, they never took it up. They ruled on the animal fuzzy exception, on the occupational code because the occupational code preempted cities to be able to pass ordinances, restricted the gaming rooms, which example, in Hector County and City of Odessa, you see the proliferation. So, that's the issue. The courts never took up the question about a municipality of what they go forward. At this point, and that's question I asked, it's deemed up to us, and every municipality and county to do what they feel that they can do, according to this opinion. But, the thing is, is the court never took up about how you're going to enforce it. Their charge was the occupational code, and that's what they ruled on. And what they ruled on is that these amusement machines, the way we have it listed, but the way it's identified throughout the state is eight liners, video gambling machines, gambling machines. And they basically said unconstitutional. Unconstitutional in the Texas state constitution for the simple reason, under the gambling chapters of the constitution. That the reason is they can't operate under that strict code. These machines are not, they're a lottery. And lottery is illegal in the state of Texas, except for the ping pong lottery and the scratch off. And let me tell you, these machines don't fit in that parameter. And so, that's definitive. There isn't any gray room here. There isn't something you scratch out, "Hmm, I wonder what they're trying to say." Read the opinion, it is precise. The three justices wrote an opinion on this. But, what they did leave, they didn't address, for the reason that wasn't the charge, was how we wind up going. But, it doesn't prohibit or limit the municipalities and the counties. That is something that I definitely vet throughout, to make sure that what we can and cannot do.
And Natasha, you said they're waiting to go till what date? May 2nd?
Yeah, that's when they can file a petition.
Yes, we have to see if the Court of Appeals will even grant them an extension to file. That's their extension to file for a rehearing.
May 2nd.
Yes.
And those that will be doing it are the two game room operators, which is Stephanie Lynn Riley?
I don't know who they are.
Yeah, Stephanie Lynn Riley of Texas CND Amusement Incorporated, and Brian and Lisa Scott, DBA, TSCA, and DBA River Bottom respondents. These are the two game owners and operators that sued the city of Fort Worth and the city manager, David Cook. And they have been representing the Fort Worth in that capacity. And so, they're the ones that would have to, if they're granted...
And what they're asking specifically is if they will grant the rehearing based on bank. So, normally, three justices write these opinions. And now, there are seven that could. And so, now, they're asking for a rehearing to see if all seven justices would write or listen to this opinion.
It's a tough question. The problem I'm having with it, because I did ask Natasha that question this afternoon, because that opinion of mine, it becomes a question for me that we're collecting money for machines that at least one court has ruled unconstitutional. And for us to pass an ordinance and continue to collect money, which, by the way, we're sacrificing quite a bit of dough. We'd make some good money off those machines. But, I think my sensibility says that if, that that's got, we can't do both. We either have them or we don't have them, one or the other. And I feel like if we have them, we're not really following the law. I guess that's where I am. I know it's not where we started out going, but since this has come down, it's kind of... And it makes me a little bit nervous to take that hard of a step. But, I'm getting a lot of complaints on my side of town, from my constituents, that they don't like seeing these things pop up. And all the new ones have popped up east of Grandview. The new ones on the last 60, 90 days, five of them, four of them. And they're all within 500 feet of each other, most of them pretty close together. So, it's kind of, it's not really, it's just, I feel like we're doing something illegal if we continue to do this. I think it's either we do it or we don't do it. And I'm not sure what's right. But, it feels like unconstitutionality, that the opinion says, kind of flames it for me.
Okay.
And so, with it being illegal or unconstitutional? Unconstitutional. Our ordinance would do what?
We wouldn't have an ordinance.
That's what I'm saying, but I thought you were proposing a pardon.
No, what basically we're saying is two things. We can wind up, and that's what I asked the counsel, they can go and continue and regulate the premises under the amendments in which we just spoke. The premise on a separate issue is pass a law, an ordinance, that is basically structured by the penal code, chapter 47, and what it constitutes gaming machines, gambling. And it's very restrictive. Basically, under the penal code and Texas constitution, we reinforce the state constitution, where it prohibits all lotteries and other, well, this right here, Texas constitution, it's not to chat with bingo raffles. That right there is incorrect, we're not outlawing that. Basically, what we're doing is enforcing the state constitution that allows only lottery, that is, scratch off and bingo, that is also only raffling, and I think that's it, right? The scratch off, the bingo, the ping pong, and the raffling. That's very restrictive. And nowhere does it allow any type of lottery that is eight liner gambling machines or video gaming machines. And what else do we have? Now, the amusement machines is what is allowed under the occupational code. And that's how we have it in our city ordinance, that has to be stricken. For the reason is that if we wind up putting amusement, then in itself, well, that in itself is what we're seeing in what we're seeing here locally. And so, what I like for us, you know, it's up to the council. I want the council to discuss, one, if they're willing to continue with the regulation of the premises. Two, is to consider and speak about creating a law where we wind up definitive, narrowly, and outlaw the gaming machines. The gambling machines, the video gaming machines, and video gambling machines that are currently operating unconstitutionally and illegal within the Incorporated City of Odessa.
What's the definition of an eight liner?
We'll have to look it up, I don't have it on my mind.
What's the definition? Is that different than other machines?
So, the eight liners, in this opinion, it's going to be, there is a definition. It's basically like slot machines. So, where it has three lines, three columns, you gotta match up. From what I'm told, you have to match up the numbers and the pictures and stuff. That's what an eight liner machine is.
Okay, and...
And that's what is issue here in this case.
And in these game rooms in our city, there are other machines besides eight liners?
We don't know.
I don't know.
Does any, anybody know? And while they're coming up, I'd just like to clarify. When we talk about chapter 47 of the penal code, that is already state law. So, we can enforce that without coming up with an ordinance. It's chapter 47 of the penal code, which might be the simplest thing to do, is to enforce that state law under section 47.
And under that section, we have the authority to confiscate. We can send a notification to remove the machines and give them 30 days to remove the machines.
I haven't looked at a day requirement or any...
We don't, no, there isn't one in there. I'm just asking, could we?
But, we can enforce under the penal code of chapter 47.
And it would be seizing, chapter 47 does allow for seizing of any gambling devices. I believe it's, you're not seizing the device, you're seizing the guts.
The what?
The guts, the motherboard that actually makes it run.
So, we'd be leaving the machine there?
Yes, because if not, you're gonna have to store all of these machines somewhere.
They're going in over at the republic. I'm serious.
So, yes, chapter 47 does allow for the seizure of machines under that. It is a criminal offense.
And so, the thing is, is that, so the thing is, is that we keep replacing the motherboard. If we're leaving the device there, the control device. That's basically what it's called. Because eight liner is a machine, that's an electronic gaming machine that resembles a slot machine. Depending on the type of machine, a player wins if a horizontal, vertical, diagonal row of optics line up. That's definitely the Webster's definition of it. So, if we wind up taking the motherboard, and we take them all, they're operational. How long before they wind up being operational?
That's a good question that I do not have an answer to. I don't know that that would be for legal to discuss. I'm sure that the district attorney or county attorneys who have prosecuted that are more familiar with it.
There hasn't been any prosecution here in this county. We have sent this to the DA without a response. And so, that's why I went out of the county to be able to get an opinion. And so, and under, and so, when I was advised about this, is that we could actually remove and have that, whether it's under the operators and owners, they would remove that. And we can wind up taking out the motherboards, but that machine will have to be... Or so, you're basically saying, we take out the motherboard, that device is no longer unconstitutional, illegal. So, that's not how I understood it.
No, I'm simply talking about seizure of the devices. I'm not even addressing the unconstitutionality. I'm talking about seizure under the penal code? That's typically what happens. And actually, that came from DA Wertham, when I spoke with him on the phone.
So, basically, what we could do is instruct our police department to seize, and what they'd be seizing would be the guts of each machine throughout in the Incorporated City of Odessa, under the penal code, chapter 47.
Once they would go about investigating a case under chapter 47, yes, at that point in time, they would go through the normal process for, you know, investigating, presenting charges, the DA accepting those charges, then moving forward, yes.
So, that would be the process. We'd have to go premise to premise, investigating, yep, that's a gaming machine that's illegal. We've done our investigation, we pressed the charges, and then send them over to the DA.
Yes, I don't... Yes, yes, in a very, very nutshell, very small nutshell, yes.
Explain to me the difference between being unconstitutional and being illegal.
Okay, so, I will actually take the words of the court in this opinion. Unconstitutional, the lottery. So, the constitution says lotteries are prohibited unless it's going to be the state lottery, the charitable bingo, or the charitable raffle. So, if it's anything outside of that, it's considered a lottery. A lottery is considered something that is, you pay compensation for a chance to win a prize. That's what a lottery is, and that's what this opinion details. And so, under the constitution, if it's a lottery, it's unconstitutional outside of charitable bingo, charitable raffle, or state lottery. Now, the difference with illegality falls under the penal code. And so, the penal code has an exclusion built into chapter 47 that it says, okay, gambling is wrong unless you are only, it talks about the machines, unless you're operating these machines of chance, of skill, for, it's called the fuzzy animal exclusion, for something that is basically under $5. So, you're paying the skee ball machine to get a fuzzy animal. That's the fuzzy animal exclusion, and that's the illegality part of that. And so, the court did not address the illegality. The court only addressed the constitutionality. So, they are considered lotteries. And in this case, the Fort Worth operators, they said, they stipulated, in stipulation to the court, they said, "Our eight liners are games of chance. There is no skill involved, it is purely chance. The person playing can't control it." And so, the court found that they were lotteries, illegal under the constitution because they are not a state lottery, a charitable bingo, or a charitable raffle.
Mayor, could we not add to our ordinance prohibiting eight liner machines? Wouldn't that?
We could reiterate the constitution because the constitution's already deemed that illegal and constitutional.
Just put that in our language.
Yeah, we definitely can.
An ordinance, and that just clears everything up.
Yeah, we can. We can formulate something that, under those lines.
Well, the problem, because the problem with the eight liners is, as Monique was stating, as long as they're paying less than $5 in prize money, or then they are legal. But, so, but they can program them to pay just under that amount and just do multiple payouts.
Well, that's what they're doing now.
That's what they're doing right now, and that's how they're getting away with it. So, we just ban, prohibit the eight liner machines in our ordinance, that takes care of it.
But, since they've been deemed lottery, they're illegal. And they were hiding on the occupational code, and that's gone. Texas constitution, legislature passed laws prohibiting establishment of lotteries and gifts enterprises in this state. That's what those eight liners are, as well as the sale of tickets and lotteries, gifts, enterprise, and invasion of the lottery principles. Thing is, is that even the Texas penal code in here, 47, lottery means "Any scheme or procedure whereby one or more prizes distributed by a chance among persons that have been paid or promised consideration of a chance to win of anything of value." Everyone here, within this council chamber, knows what's going on in those. You personally may not be going there. But, the thing is, I'm witnessing it firsthand. Older relatives or friends of ours are going down there. And these gaming rooms are predominantly here at late, have proliferated this community. They're going into low-moderating neighborhoods. And those that can least afford it are spending their extra time and extra money going in there, playing for a game of chance. And they're getting behind. "Let me play a little bit longer, and I'll get even." And what it's doing is destroying, they're prohibited being able to pay their bills. They're destroying lives, destroying families. Kids are being destroyed. I mean, the thing is, is that we need to take action. This community is demanding for us to take action. This is a very hard and arduous decision. It's not, you know, for me, for me, it's clear cut, but it's asking a lot. We introduced it here at the last minute, been reading on it quite a bit, spent a lot of time with legal, going back and forth and discussing it. I've made my, and my position's been very clear that I think that the state constitution is clear cut in this, and that's what we should be following. Bypass the state legislature. If these operators and owners don't like the way it is, and they're no longer hiding under the fuzzy exceptional rule, well, then go and petition your state rep and change the law. But, right now, the state constitution rules this state. And the state constitution is definitive on gambling. But, you know, I understand that this is a lot to catch up. And so, I'll refer to the council for any more discussion or any direction.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to make a motion to table this for our workshop next week to where it gives us an opportunity to consider our options. I think you've brought up some very valid points, but I'd like an opportunity to kind of digest that a little bit.
Second. I recognize the motion in the second, counsel. Any further discussion on the, all the, on the gaming rooms? The constitutionality, the illegality, the state constitution, the penal code, the regulation of the premises, the direction of enforcing the PD to enforce what is already, as far as gambling, in the penal code, chapter 47? Or even discussion on the motion to table and second? Seeing that there's no discussion, we have a motion to table item two, is that correct? Yes. So, we have a motion by Councilmember White in the item two, discussing approved amendments of Article 4 through 17, video gaming. I have a second by Councilmember Sprouse. All in favor, in favor of tabling the item, say so by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Opposed. Item is tabled. And then, okay, so, I'm sorry about this, but we do have someone that's willing to come over and discuss item two. Mr. Robinson, are you still willing to come up and address the council? I'm sorry about that, completely, in the midst of everything that we're talking about.
My name's Larry Robinson, I live in Odessa.
You don't need to put your address, just your name.
I don't.
Okay.
I won't. Good afternoon, city councilmen, women, manager, attorney, and secretary. I know y'all have all worked hard on this. I mean, it's been a daunting task coming up, facing it for a long time, and somebody's finally had... and somebody's finally had to bite the bullet. I don't have any interest in game rooms, I have some property that I lease out. I have interest in the people that have been in their work so hard, and they have little understanding, some of them, of our language, and so, I have a lot of compassion for them. But the only thing I have to say today is, I really appreciate the mayor's fortitude, his personal fortitude, in pursuing this task, and, because it's, it's gonna get harder and harder as we go. This is really a big thing to go on. The comments I wanted to make regarding the draft, though, are on items three and C. Three C and nine A, both of them the same thing, is that, uh, and we're talking about the unincorporated county and their rules of February twenty-second, and also, the, that's to do with distancing and in the city zoning on, on nine A. Three C was distance, and nine A, uh, was zoning. But, the only thing I wanted to point out is that the sheriff's department sent letters to a lot of their people saying they weren't gonna affect this until May twenty-second, because, uh, the county, and, and we didn't know what the Supreme Court was gonna rule on the appeal. And that, I had a lot of questions and a lot of things that that answered. I mean, it, you know, I wanna abide by the law, I want everybody to, and, you know, I, I stand behind whatever my council and my mayor do. Uh, but I think those dates of buyers that say May the first in there on deadlines for the grandfather issue, or changing of an application on three C and A, they should probably, uh, be aligned with at least when the county is gonna make theirs effective, with their effective date with ninety days from February twenty-second, which would be May twenty-second, if this gets along that far by then. But, uh, other than that, uh, I appreciate all y'all've done, I, you know, I don't have any interest in game room, I can't tell you what goes on. I collect the rent, and that's it, and, uh, our councilman Steve Thompson is really notable for going down second, noticing buildings that have been empty for ten years, all of a sudden, somebody's in there. That's really, there's a big impact on the count, economy, the amount of money they put in, probably hundred thousand for renovation, hundred thousand for machines, and then what they pay into the county, four hundred fifty, five hundred thousand dollars in revenue. It's a hu- been a huge impact, and it keeps people out of bars and off the street drunk, they're in there. But, it's not legal, they can't do it anymore. So, you know, I, I commend y'all on the hard task you've taken on, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson.
Thank you.
Okay, we're moving on, I've lost my agenda. We're moving on to item, uh, three? Yeah, that's it right there, yeah, I was like- Okay, so, um, that was a lengthy discussion. So, you lose the bet, we're not out of here by six forty-five. So, uh, item three, consider the approval of discretionary service agreement and funding for work required by Encore on the water treatment plant rehab miscellaneous upgrades. Mr. Kerr.
Good evening, mayor and council. Uh, so, we have for you, with, with you in agreement with, uh, Encore. Encore is the sole electrical distribution provider, uh, for the city of Odessa, and, um, we have worked with them to provide, uh, a new transformer and switchgear at the water treatment plant as part of the water treatment plant project. Um, as we are the, the customer for this facility, and they are the sole provider, uh, they have provided a, a price of seventy-nine thousand, five hundred and eighty-one dollars and forty-two cents to provide that equipment. The, um, the new transformer and switchgear will be placed, would be placed, and then new electrical equipment that we're putting in at the plant would be energized off the new equipment, so that the existing equipment can remain on the old transformer and old switchgear until all of the work is completed. Uh, the funding we're, uh, proposing is from the remainder of the, uh, water treatment plant, uh, twenty-twenty-one certificates of obligation.
Council-
Is that your contingency fund, correct?
Yeah.
Out of contingency?
This is out of the remainder of the funds on the, on the ninety-five million dollars.
But it's part of the contingency.
Yeah, well, how, nineteen percent, that's what I'm asking.
Yes, sir, yes, sir, I'm sorry, yeah, that's right. I lose to, lose the terminology.
Well, you knew this was coming, I guess, but-
Yes, sir, we just didn't have the price until a, a little short, a little bit ago, and, um-
Oh, we're way behind, I know that, so.
They, they, we've been working with them, and, uh, they do have a lot of work we're working with them on.
Yes, sir.
Okay. I'm good. Council, any discussion, direction? Do we have a motion?
So moved.
I have a motion by, uh, councilman Thompson. I have a, uh, second by council member White, all in favor indicated by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed indicated by saying nay, motion passes.
Thank you all.
Note that Mark Mata was on bathroom break, put that in the minutes. Item four, consider public artwork DC, I told you. Item four, consider public artwork designs.
Yeah, or nay?
We need speakers in the restroom.
Item four, consider public artwork designs, uh, for fire station six, animal control and Lee Street building complex. Mr. Ham, you, I wasn't, I wasn't joking-
On time and prepared.
I wasn't joking, I, I, I instructed Norma to put you on the last.
Yes, sir, I've learned my lesson. Uh, good afternoon, good evening, uh, Mr. Mayor and council members. I come to you today with the, uh, this is a public art that we discussed in work session last week. There we go. Uh, there are three pieces, one is for fire station number six, one is for the animal control facility, and, uh, one is for the family wellness clinic mural. The designs that you're about to see are the same designs that you saw last week, with the exception of, um, Lee Street, which I mentioned during work session that we had some, uh, changes, and so, what you'll see before you is the final design. The first one is for fire station number six, uh, this is lighted stained glass. It is, uh, created by Bryant, Bryant Stanton, West Texas native, who now has a stained glass studio out of Waco, um, putting fire to water. And that is, uh, within budget, and he has, uh, he and I have discussed the, uh, project timeline, and will be able to work with the contractors to get this completed at the same time that the fire station is completed, because its windows, we're gonna need them.
I think you said that backward, it's putting water to fire.
But, I'm sorry, yeah, putting water to fire. Well, when it, when fire meets water, one of them's always gonna win. Uh, my second design is by Dabari and Associates, and I'm very excited about this one, because we've been wanting to find a project to work with Dabari for, for many years, and Mr. Patton from Parks and Rec is who brought them to my attention. This is, uh, the sculpture that will go in front of the animal control facility. You can see it is, uh, powder-coated metal, and it has, uh, reference for the size of it. It is also within budget of eighty thousand dollars, and should be completed at the same time the animal control facility is completed, uh, in December of this year. And finally, we have the revised Welcome to Odessa Postcard mural, which will go on the side of the family wellness clinic, a budget of twenty thousand dollars. And the artist is ready to start as soon as we contract with him. And so, he is, uh, already excited about this, uh, as you have seen from the Ferdinand mural, and also from the Black Tulip mural. He's going to have some community engagement where the community can come and help paint parts of the mural, which is gonna give us a sense of ownership. And again, all three of these projects are going to give us a lot more civic pride, and I'm-
Get to paint Buba.
Very excited about this, so, I'm- I am happy to entertain any questions.
Any questions? Any, any digs?
I don't like to laugh.
Any comments?
I think they're beautiful. Good job.
I love, I love the animal shelter, that's terrific.
Uh, I, I have to hand it to the, the members of the public art committee, and the members of the public, and members of this, uh, council who have sat in on selection committees for several of these projects, to really put them in a place that, and, and a design that is going to resonate with the public. So, it's, it may be just one person standing up here answering the questions, but it really was a community effort. This is the public face of public art.
Very good. Council, anything else? Any more integration of Randy? Randy, thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We're gonna move on to ordinances, item five, amending the Odessa City Code, articles six through nine.
Excuse me, mayor and council, can we need a-
Oh, do we have to vote on this? Why didn't we just put this on the, uh, cause the amount? Okay, so, I have a, uh, I have a, um, mo- a motion for, to approve item four by coun- council member Willis, second by council member Sprouse, all in favor indicated by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed indicated by saying nay, motion passes unanimously. Okay, so, ordinances, move on to item five, amending the Odessa City Code, articles six through nine, ambulances, providing a definition of hardship assistance.
Good evening, council, mayor.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Um, what I would like for you to consider is amending the language to article six-nine of ambulances, which would allow us to be able to capture some of the money that it's left, um, from unpaid or uninsured EMS services. Um, the state, uh, program has changed its language, and so, we, we just wanna come in line with it, and which would allow us to capture some of these funds.
Council, any questions? Steve?
I've got one, yeah, I've got one. When we talked last Tuesday?
Yes, sir.
Did I read this right, and saying that we got, there's five million dollars of lost revenue we're trying to re- That's what we're trying to recoup, right?
Yes, yes.
With this, with this third-party service?
Yes.
Okay, so, that's a considerable loss we take every year. And so, my question was before, and I hope you have the answer, was how much of that's outside of the city limits in the county?
All.
How many runs? I asked for the number about how many runs we were making in the county, I didn't get that information.
We sent it, we sent it out in the, uh, in an email, yeah, it was substantial.
Mr. Thompson, I'm-
Cindy has those numbers.
Yeah, she has those numbers.
Yeah, I, I never saw it, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Unless, you know-
It's quite substantial.
Yeah, I figured it was, and I would-
In, in three months.
Do you have any idea how much of that five million is outside the city? Can you tell that?
Um, twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one, uh, we were- We were close to a million dollars that was left out in the county.
A million?
Yes. And that's, uh, an annual. So, yeah, we're touching on a million that's, that's left un- unclaimed.
So, what, what you're looking at was provided by the fire department. So, the first page is for the calendar year twenty-one. Shows you the number of EMS, uh, county and city. That's a total of fifteen thousand and one, that's just EMS, okay? The next page will show you county only, was a total of fourteen hundred and sixty-two. And then, the next two pages are just showing you January through April twelfth, EMS county and city, and then the last page, EMS county only. And what you got sent out in the packet was information that Gapi had put together as far as charges, okay? And so, he was giving you just county charges for seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, and twenty-one through May of twenty-one, along with the, what was paid and what the remaining balance was, okay? So, that information that came in the email was strictly the amounts for county ambulance, okay?
I got to go pull that, I'm sorry, I, either I misread it or didn't understand what I was reading. I didn't understand what I was reading. Okay.
Gapi, when will we see this program implemented? And then, then, then walk us through of how it, uh, start the process of, of obtaining the losses?
This program is already in, is in existence, it, it, it's just changed.
Well, that's right.
Okay, it's changed.
Yeah.
Um, where it was, we could, uh, recover money from, uh, the government, government insurances, and we, the last time we participated, we collected six hundred and twenty-seven thousand, I think-
Okay.
That we collected from, and, uh, this is for the fire department. So, uh, they've, they basically have moved the goalpost on us a little bit, just made it a little bit more difficult, changed the language, so, we're just adjusting to it. Uh, so, currently, what they've taken a look at, and they said, okay, well, you, you've got about four million dollars that you have in debt that hasn't been paid, that, that's eligible for this, which would require that we, through our process, start the recovery of these funds, and we have to designate them, um, hardship assistance. And that, that would, that would be, that would fall on, on my department. And, um, after we, we do this, and they filed, and we filed for the recovery of it, now, we have to share with the remainers of the city, the states, the cities within the states that are participated in it. And then, that's what they, they call the haircut. So, um, which is still not bad, I mean, this is money that, that's, that's out there. It's just a matter of, if, 'cause I'd like to say is, we have to hustle for it. And, uh, if, if you're not gonna, if we're not gonna hustle for it, then it's, it's not, it's not worth it. It's because it takes some work to get it done. But, uh, we're well-equipped, um, we, we already are set. My department has a lot of the things already in place that, that's required for, for it. And, um, it's just a matter of changing the language so we can move.
And that's what this is?
Yes.
Okay. Council, any other questions, direction? We have a motion for approval, item, uh, five. I have a motion by council members, uh, Willis, second by council member Mata, all in favor indicated by saying aye.
Aye.
All those against, uh, indicated by saying nay, motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Benat. Uh, moving on to item six, consider amending the Odessa City Code, chapter one, relating to boards, commissions, committees, first approval, Ms. Grimaldo, anybody do their homework on this? I know I didn't.
Mayor and council, this is just a couple of housekeeping items. One of them is to take away the, uh, there's the, the Parks and Recreation attendance. It's on there twice in two separate sections, so we're just cleaning it up and putting it under the Parks and Recreation. And the other one is, uh, adding language for the Odessa Development Corporation to be inconsistent with the bylaws, the Articles of Incorporation, and the statute.
And what was that again? You're gonna have to remind me.
We're adding language under the Odessa Development Corporation to promote and develop industrial manufacturing, enterprises, and bring in new jobs, and any other purposes allowed under the economic development.
I recall this, we're expanding the scope.
This was actually already defined in the Articles of Incorporation, so it was just to make the two consistent. We're not expanding anything in there.
That we already don't have.
In the Articles of Incorporation, yes, sir.
Do we have the president here, do you, you wanna come and speak on? Did you already approve this, uh, through the ODC? Austin?
Oh, Austin, I don't know, right?
No, we don't have-
We don't have anybody, okay. Who is the president? It's, uh, David Latine, I'm sorry. Oh, man, I was already promoting you, brother. You want the job?
Tell me, tell me-
The Articles of Incorporation were filed in nineteen ninety-seven, so it was just very inconsistent with that.
So, we're doing, say it again, I just, I didn't raise your with me, I'm sorry.
The language that we were adding just to, for housekeeping matters was language consistent with the original Articles of Incorporation that were filed in nineteen ninety-seven. So, we're not expanding anything, changing anything, or anything of that nature, it's just to be consistent with the articles.
So, council, do we have a motion on both items? Item six?
So moved.
I have a motion by councilman, uh, member Sprouse, second by councilmember White, all in favor indicated by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed indicated by saying nay, motion passes unanimously. We're gonna move on to, uh, miscellaneous appointment of boards, Ms. Grimaldo?
No, sir, we don't have any.
Ah-huh. Seeing that there is no more business before, the city council will have a motion to adjourn. I have a motion by councilmember Thompson, second by, uh, councilmember Willis, all in favor indicated by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed indicated by saying nay. Motion passes unanimously, we are adjourned, everybody be safe going home.